Madam Chairman, we're live.
Welcome back to our morning session of Wednesday, October 22nd. Next up on our agenda is a presentation from Clearwater Financial on our Fairgrounds Master Plan. Welcome. Good to see you guys.
Yeah.
Good to be with you guys.
It's great to be on with you this morning. It's nice to see, sort of see you guys. We get to see Commissioner Caldwell every other week, so that's been a real treat. We are here this morning to provide an update on the Fairgrounds' master plan. My name is Abby Yerkeyaga with Clearwater Financial. Cameron Ariel is also on the call, as well as the site designer Amanda Swales. So we're all joining virtually this morning. As a reminder, Clearwater is the county's municipal advisor and is serving as the project lead for the master plan project, just to help support the county through its facility planning, prioritization, engagement, and then subsequent funding strategies. So if it's okay with the commissioners, we'll go ahead and share our screen with our presentation.
We're excited to see it.
Excellent. All right, is that coming through okay?
We're excited to show it. This has been pretty cool, you guys.
Excellent. So go ahead and get started. This planning effort is building on the county's 2023 master facility plan where it was identified as a priority. And then it has remained a priority and then even moved to the top of the county's priorities in its subsequent 2024 and 2025 master facility plan updates. The project goals for this, for the Fairgrounds site is to evaluate how the site is functioning today, opportunities where it could be improved or expanded or possibly reconfigured. But hopefully looking for that year-round use that can serve the entire county. Right now, because of its central location right in Cascade, we'd really like to expand that to include Donnelly and McCall residents as well. But then to help also guide long-term investment for the county with this venue and then future community events. A little bit of background is that the site is currently shared with the Roads and Bridge Department, actually has primary use of the site. That relocation of the Roads and Bridge Department is anticipated for sometime in the spring of 2026, which will help to open up different opportunities for the site, especially around reconfiguration. And then the county had also recently acquired the Amerititle Building, which is now the Cascade Annex property, which could also play a role in helping to expand the Fairgrounds footprint, maybe potentially adding in some, some access as well. But it's right there as a bookend on the, on the side of the Fairgrounds. So it's really a great space configuration of both those sites together. Okay, we want to move on to the project timeline, just to orient the commission and the community with where this project started, where we're at, and when we anticipate to be able to wrap this up. So we kicked this off in May and we'll get into some project progress a little bit later in our presentation. This slide is depicting not only our timeline, but also the phases that this project is anticipated to go through. So the initiation, analysis, testing, recommendation, and implementation phases. Right now, you can see that little diamond in the middle. We are in between analysis and testing, and those, those phases tend to overlap because we are wrapping up some of those activities that will help to inform our testing phase and scenario creation. That includes the community survey that's live right now, as well as community stakeholder interviews that we're in the process of wrapping up. But this gives a high-level overview of where we are. Timing-wise, we anticipate being able to wrap this up by the end of the first quarter of 2026. There any questions about the timing or timeline? We will also share some anticipated upcoming presentation content and, and dates with the commission a little bit towards the later part of our presentation as well. Go ahead and move to the next slide. So this slide is going to help provide again a little bit higher level overview of those phases that I referenced in the prior slide, as well as what's included in them, so that the county, the commission, and residents have an idea of what to expect in terms of how this project is going to roll out. The project follows those five major phases that we previously mentioned. There's a little bit of a description about what's included in each one of those. And since we're, we're in between the analysis and testing, we'll, we'll touch on what's included there. So those stakeholder interviews, the facility and site analysis, as well as that public survey creation and deployment. As we move into testing, we'll work on that survey summary to where we're able to really capture the engagement and put that into a report that will help inform our scenarios that will come afterward. And then as we move into the testing, Clearwater is also working on an economic and demographic impact report in conjunction with Amanda developing those site scenarios for your consideration as well. But after those two scenarios is when we would move to more of that recommendation phase, where you're presented with options, we're able to talk through those, refine those, edit those, re-present them for consideration, and identify something that's preferred for the county. And that will lead to cost estimations and preliminary cost estimates. And then we would move to implementation, where we would help you with the phasing and sequencing activities for what the county ultimately decides to select. Cameron, do you have anything that you would add there at all?
Yeah, just to, you know, want to just kind of put an emphasis on where we're at in the process and really appreciated Abby walking through kind of those next steps and what to expect. Because there will be, you know, there's, you know, it's really good to be in front of you for this kind of first, you know, blush of, of our progress, but there'll be, you know, a lot of work to come. And we look forward to engaging with the commission and others on some of that, what I would call more meaty conversation. This is more, more or less an update of kind of what we've gathered, more, more or less, and what we're, we're hearing from, from various stakeholders, the community and so forth. But yeah, that, this kind of this middle ground of the process is really where we start to, to put meat on the bone, if that makes sense. So excited to be here with you and looking forward to those, those next steps.
Thank you, Cameron. We also included on this slide the deliverables that are associated with this project, just for everyone's reference, what we're working towards with that site and facility analysis, which will be part of the final report that we provide to the commission. We've also got the public engagement and community survey aspect, the stakeholder interviews, the economic and demographic impact review, those conceptual site scenarios and preliminary cost estimates, as well as ultimately ending with the funding and implementation guidance. Are there any questions about this slide or any of those phases?
How many responses have you had on the survey?
That's a great question, Commissioner. We've had, and we'll get into some more survey detail in, I think, just a minute. But there've been 232 responses, so approximately 2% of the county's population. And in terms of response rate on a survey, it's fairly typical. What we see is around 2% to 3%, sometimes we can get up to 5% or more. But the survey is ongoing and it will remain live throughout the entirety of the project. But we'll present on the bulk of those responses and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, great, move on. Oh, anything? Okay. So as we're talking about what's been accomplished in the project so far, it's, this is a very simple slide that involves quite a bit of time and effort on behalf of not just the consultancy, but particularly the county, the Fair Board, members of our steering committee. And so we did kick off this project in May. We came up, there's some great photos of us in the room you guys are sitting in right now, when we kicked this off with Commissioner Caldwell. We were able to establish a steering committee to help guide the planning process, while we're including that diverse local input. You know, Cascade, it's not large. The county itself is not particularly large, but that the members of the steering committee have really been able to provide a robust, comprehensive viewpoint that's helping to inform where we're going in the direction of this project. So the steering committee includes members from the county, University of Idaho Extension and 4H, the Fair Board, the City of Cascade. Mayor Judy's been a great presence at all of our meetings. We have also some public construction input from DeFort Construction, and then we also have our consultancy as a part of that. So it's, it's a little bit of, it's a large steering committee, but that we're meeting bi-weekly, making really good progress. And, you know, the participation and input has really been invaluable into informing the direction of these, this type of a project. So typically, any project is going to be a little bit different. And while the deliverables high level may remain the same, the direction that a project might take could veer slightly from one project to another. And this has been a really great experience with a very participatory steering committee that's heavily involved in getting community input and helping to, to gather that and summarize that so we can reflect it in what ultimately will be the county's plan. We've also, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to add real quickly, commissioners, a good evidence of that has just been, and I'm sure Commissioner Caldwell can speak to this as well, but just the commitment to stakeholder engagement is, I think, a good example of that. You know, we, we did kind of an initial blush at that, got some, some pretty good response, but it was, I think it was pretty clear from the steering committee that, hey, there's, there's some key folks that we, we absolutely need to have comment on this. And, you know, don't want to over, you know, dramatize it, but it was kind of a, we, we need to kind of, you know, bird dog some folks to make sure they respond. And I think that's a good example of what Abby's talking about, where, you know, we have 17 responses there. But I think that, that number is, is indicative of a lot of effort to make sure that we're getting that level of stakeholder engagement. So just a good commitment all around from, from the steering committee to, to that. And I think that's, that's really going to pay off, not only in what kind of the next steps are, but also just the overall success of the project. But just wanted to highlight that a little bit.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have conducted, much to Cameron's point, about 17 stakeholder interviews. And we have, I have maybe one or two that are remaining that the county has indicated are really important for us to include. So those are the last ones that we'll conduct as, before we start to go through that stakeholder summary and prepare that report. But we've also created the project webpage that is housing information. So once this presentation is wrapped up, it will be added to the county's project webpage, which is a resource for residents to check in and see what the latest is, how they might be involved, things to that nature. We had the survey that was launched June 20th with more than 230 responses. And then we've begun coordination as newer development to, with the Southern Valley County Rec District. So to, about a week ago, we were able to join their meeting. And it seems like there's a lot of potential for that partnership moving forward, a lot of interest from their board to see how we might be able to complement what they have going on and, and the activities that they host with where this project is headed and how it might be developed. So that, that arose as part of a secondary access point for the Fairgrounds conversation. And Amanda will speak to that a little bit later in our presentation. But overall, and we also did create the Fairgrounds video, which will launch probably at the end of this week. It will be available on the county's project webpage and then shared out over social media. But it was put together from the site visits that occurred initially with the project kickoff. And Commissioner Caldwell got to see it on Monday, the draft of it. We're making a few little edits and cleanups to it, and then it should be ready for everyone to view and for public output. But we're really excited about that as well, as it's capturing very comprehensively the sentiment and commitment of the, of the county and of the Fair Board and of U of I Extension, all of these areas that are heavily invested in the Fairgrounds location and what it provides to the community. It's really capturing that commitment really nicely. So we're excited to share that out here in the next week. Are there any questions about where we are or things that we've, we've accomplished so far during the project?
I'm curious, Abby, of the 17 stakeholder interviews, is there regional interest in this or are those mainly in Cascade? Now, where, what are the, the businesses stakeholders to the north thinking of this?
Well, with the stakeholders, those are great questions, Commissioner. With the stakeholders, we do protect their, their identity. Everything that we do for them is going to be anonymized. But I'd have to look back, if it's okay with you, just to look back at our stakeholder list and, you know, provide that in more detail, because I'm not exactly sure. We've had multiple team members conducting these interviews and we haven't had a chance to really compile and summarize them yet.
Okay, that'd be great. I can pull that up right here. We actually do have a very good representation of the county. And that was one of our goals as a steering committee, was to make sure that we didn't just focus on Cascade, that we focused across. So we have several from Donnelly, several from McCall. So what each of us steering committee members did was we put together our own list and then combined it together. So like Melissa with UI Extension has a lot more contacts in McCall that she thought would be interested, as well as just some of the other ones. So we have tried to make sure that it's equally represented across the county. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or, go ahead.
Sorry, for example, we did the McCall Arts and Humanities Council has a representative. The city of McCall Rec District has a, or Rec Department has a representative. So we definitely tried to make sure the north end of the county was also. Perfect, thank you.
And I think kind of to that, to that point and to that, the question as well, I do think, obviously I don't want to jump the gun, but I do think it's fairly well-known that, well, or, or not, but that the, the Fairgrounds isn't well-known in the north currently. So I think it poses a really good strategic opportunity to, you know, expose the entire county, you know, to the process and to the, this project in particular. But then also, what does that mean, you know, from the, from the later, you know, rungs of the project? Because I think as it is exposed to more of the county, the opportunity will also be more comprehensive as well. So I think to Commissioner Caldwell's point, you know, there's a concerted effort here to, you know, making, making the site, making the project a county, a countywide focus.
And that is part of what's contributed to how robust the analysis phase has been, is making sure we're gathering the right input from the right people. So really being comprehensive and thorough in that, so that feedback isn't skewed heavily on Cascade and leaving out Donnelly or, or McCall for that matter. So the steering committee, I know it's been mentioned before, but they've done a great job really wrangling their stakeholders and getting them scheduled. We're going, we're excited to put that report together. Any other comments or questions about, about where we are so far? Okay, so this slide is, is letting you know how we're communicating out with, with the community. So those outreach efforts are ongoing. We'll have the survey live through the entirety of the project. And if we were to gather a significant amount of, of additional responses, we would potentially re-present that to the commission as an update, following what we present on the initial survey results. But just to give you, you know, kind of a visual overview and idea of what we've done, our facility video, that's a screenshot of the main page. We've done, Mackenzie's been wonderful helping with the social media outreach and the posts. We've designed materials for the Fourth of July Parade, things to hang around the courthouse and then handout at the fair. And then Mayor Judy has included us in this project and the survey in the City of Cascade's newsletter as well. So just kind of a 10,000-foot view on the public engagement that's gone on and will continue throughout the project.
So what, what do you have for, you say, public engagement? What kind of comments are we getting from the public? Have we got any yet or what, what do we have?
Yeah, we haven't, we don't have a space for maybe an open forum where questions could be submitted, although that is a, you know, or comments could be submitted where that could be captured. I haven't looked at the comments on the Facebook post. When I was pulling these screenshots, I didn't see comments so much as likes on the post, but I'd be happy to go back and, and check that and see if there are any comments. We are receiving comments through the survey in terms of, some of those questions are open-ended and where they could express why they may have rated a particular item lower and have that feedback in there. And we'd be happy to put that together and, and we, we do plan to present on that before the end of the year, on what those comments are like. And we'll get into some of that, those initial themes from the survey as well. Talk about that.
Yeah, I'd be interested to hear what, what the public's view is and what their comments are and what they're thinking. That'd be kind of a nice feature piece to have.
And while they're not, oh, go ahead, sorry, Cameron.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you, Abby. Yeah, to, to your comment there, you know, the, I think the, this is an opportunity, you know, as Abby mentioned, you know, throughout the whole process, but prior, particularly prior to presenting to you on it, it would be great, you know, for you all to share that amongst your own networks, neighborhoods, communities. Because again, the, the more the, the better. I think the more that people are engaged, have opportunity to provide input, the more robust the process will be. So yeah, we do plan to report back to you at the next commission meeting on, on the project and have that in a, you know, more formal report, you know, style presentation. So prior to that, you know, highly encourage everybody to, to get it out to your, to your friends and neighbors.
And I was just going to add that, you know, pre, when I was putting this together, we were seeing, you know, like an average rating of about 7.4 out of 10 in terms of the facility overall. The, the location seems to be really convenient for users. So it's more an issue of function where that rating is coming down. And some of those lower scored areas are the parking, the access to shade, ADA access, and then restrooms have emerged as well. But in terms of specific comments, we don't have those prepared for this morning, but we will have a presentation specific to the survey summary for you all here in the next probably six weeks.
Abby, I see we're only on six and we only have five minutes left.
Okay, I, yes, I will hurry, hurry. This is a snapshot of the survey. It talks about the items that we have covered in terms of facility condition and safety, views on the current location and accessibility. And we're working on compiling those reports because residents have expressed strong support for keeping the Fairgrounds active and changing it to multi-use. You can see the survey responses are heavily skewed right now. 50% are from Cascade, but you are getting a lot of participation from people who've lived in the county for 10-plus years. So just a little bit of a snapshot there. And then stakeholder interview themes, we wanted to, to capture the current future and then priorities that have been identified. So these are what are, what's emerging out of those interviews as we start to compile the reports and summarize them. But we're seeing top priorities to include infrastructure and utility upgrades, a multipurpose indoor event facility, improved coordination among user groups, and then opening up opportunities for new revenue, so event rentals or RV hookups and things like that. But there's definitely a shared vision for the Fairgrounds to remain a gathering place, but also become a gathering place for the entire county, including McCall and Donnelly. We want to prep you for what we plan to present next. That's what this slide is covering, our next presentation to you, which we anticipate to be hopefully at the beginning of December. We'll, we'll help to coordinate that out of this meeting. But the stakeholder interview summary and the survey summary, those are going to be used to inform the conceptual site scenarios and preliminary cost estimates, as, which will follow probably, you know, towards the beginning of January 2026. We'll also present an economic and demographic impact review. So we'll have time for back and forth and editing and refinement before we move to selecting a preferred scenario and recommendations and providing that funding and implementation guidance as well. And those are our slides. I think Amanda, if, if the commission has, if we have a minute or two, Amanda has a few observations as the site designer, just to speak briefly about what she's observed and secondary access.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to share mine. And everyone, is that working? No, it's not working. Let me try this again.
Now we can see it.
Okay, great. I'm going to make this bigger. And this is the site right here. And we're still investigating all the potentials for the site. But one of the first thing that has come up and what is definitely needed is that second access point. Because currently, everybody comes in one way and it bottlenecks back in here and a lot of parking occurs and nobody can get out. So we've been looking at a place to have a second access point. Not necessarily a major entrance exit, but more of a behind-the-scenes, bring in loading, you know, loading for various events or have a place for EMS to get out if there's ever an emergency. The grade, there's a couple options. It's coming off of the highway here, coming through this parking lot. However, the site, the grade right there is very steep. It would be hard to do. The easier way is to come across the railroad tracks. And so we have been looking at a potential access point coming in through here. And I have some slides about it, but I know we're kind of short on time. But I'll just quickly race through these. This is Google Maps and you can kind of see where a natural crossing has happened. It's really a pedestrian footpath sort of area. You come through at the aquatic center and can come across into here. Here's a picture from Google Maps, coming down Mill Street, you know, Kelly's Parkway, coming through to their parking lot. In the winter, there's an ice rink here. There is a shipping container in this area. The idea is to come in and around, this is what we're exploring right now. And there's a gate on the south side of the building around behind that shipping container, if that makes sense, where you can loop back in through that gate and over. Here's this gate again from the other side and the footpath that comes across to the rodeo. So that's what we are exploring right now as a second spot to come through.
Amanda, close that railroad right away now. It's still Union Pacific, isn't it?
The Idaho National, oh, Idaho Northern Pacific Rail. Here we go. I'm going to go back. It will load in a moment. Yes. Idaho, yeah, Idaho National Pacific Rail.
I I have heard that that rail may be opened up again, so there's, they're not going to give us a paved access through there. That would be an interesting conversation, but.
Yes. It, so as much as, so each each option is kind of difficult, whether you're dealing with getting across the railway or there's a lot of boulders and grade earthmoving to happen here or in here. It's, you know, it's all difficult. But that access, second access point should really be on the south of the site rather than coming more central. It would be more useful to be able to have the flow come in and out. Otherwise, you're just creating another bottleneck area.
This end down here, it would flow right up into the on the west side. Rare title parking lot.
But I think what we have to think about and what Amanda was talking to is during the fair and rodeo, most of the parking is actually across the railroad.
Yeah, they park in here.
So this is in no way like a entrance exit to be used all the time. This is for emergencies and walking, right, Amanda?
Yeah, just like a driveway that's not used very often. I mean, the gate could even be closed most of the time. But if there's an event, it gives, you know, the large trailers a place to come in because even this is difficult, getting turned around in here and coming back out. It would not become, you know, a crossing like what happens here at Mill Park or Mill Street.
So we would, now, this is just a conversation, but we'd really like to have some kind of flow up under the upper parking area where the annex is.
Yes.
We are gonna need, you know, D M D to be able to flow trailers and stuff through there also.
Yeah.
If there is any way to connect those as part of this project, that would be a benefit not only to the fair but also to the Cascade Annex.
And it's possible, but there's a lot of earthmoving that would have to happen because visually it looks like maybe twenty-five feet height difference. This is really up. This area is pretty tall compared. And there's some big boulders. Those can move, but it would be a lot of excavation.
It would need to parallel the fifty-five on the west side and come up on that west side of the building. That's where the least amount of
Yes, there is a drop. Now, I did contact I T D about an access point off of this road, and they say it is possible. But they try to, they don't want many exits off of the main highway. But she did also bring up the fact that, you know, that grade change is significant. And so that involves kind of ramping down, and that will take a lot of footprint on the site.
Steepness there.
Yeah. It can be done. It's just not easy. But it's also not easy with the railroad either.
It might be hard to get big trailers that close to fifty-five, too. That's pretty tight over on that side.
Yeah, going across railroad tracks, though, if they gave you access, like any road goes across railroad tracks, allow that.
It's pretty level here. I mean, all of this is very level in this area. It's at this point where everything goes up.
Okay, we are behind, so we need to wrap up.
Yeah.
Today.
It's, that's what we're looking at right now.
All right. I think the access will be the biggest consideration moving forward. So if we had some
Yeah, and it will be helpful.
Recommendations on that.
We're actively working on that, and we should be able to have some more updates to you the next time we present. But then definitely when we come in January and we present these different scenarios for your consideration, so you'll be able to evaluate that, and that will be a much more informed, you know, developed conversation with some with some concrete answers and direction.
Okay.
Then, kind of in closing, commissioners as well. We we have put forward to you all a the update to our retainer agreement and wanted to just make sure if you had any questions about that or if that's a a future conversation to to bring to the commission, we're we're happy to engage in that as well. But really enjoyed working with you and and presenting with you today. This has been, this has been good, good process so far.
Cameron, I've asked for that to be put on a future agenda, so that will be a separate conversation.
Okay, sounds great. Yep.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.
All right. Director Canada.
Okay, so.
Good morning.
So my main plan, I did work with Sue Lieber. She's got a nice big report for me for all of the county-owned property so I could get that under control. I'm working with Jeremy to get set up on the road department's maintenance program so we can get everything loaded in there and get a preventative maintenance program set up. So that's my main focus. I am scheduled to be at the Fall County Official Institute Training, December fourth down in Boise. It's a one-day thing. We've got a lot going on with the move. I think everything's flowing really well. The elevator repair will, should be here tomorrow. Hopefully, we can fix it this time around. I don't think I have much other besides, you know, just the grindstone. Busy, busy, busy.
Are we coming on completing the transfer site? We gonna get it done before winter?
No.
No? Oh, that building's gonna be closed?
No, 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 no. I I should say, the the project itself will fall over into spring only because we didn't want to put down asphalt and try to guarantee that it would hold over the winter with the weather that we have right now. So in the spring, they will come and and do the asphalt and then it will be closed. But billing itself, the transfer billing itself, will be here shortly. I am, we'll be up there Thursday and have a better understanding about where we're at, but we're close. We're really close. I was up there yesterday. It looks real nice.
They did put asphalt in front of the building, so.
Yeah, they're gonna put a two-inch lift around it to to keep everything intact. And then when they come back in the spring, they're gonna kick it out and do it right, four-inch lift and the correct elevations and whatnot.
Is there a way that you could have Great West give us a breakdown on all of the costs so far? Kind of give us a project update on the budget?
Yes, ma'am. That I'm also, I should have told you that, too. I'm also working on that. I need to pull all of those payments to the contractor from Tyler. Send it to Adam. That's on my to-do list today, so he'll have that so he can bounce what he's got going on. So and they're they're where I do not have the change order signature at their authority, so everything will be going through the engineers, not me. I will be the last one to go, yes, with the exception of you guys, obviously. But we shouldn't see any more change requests, should it? Unless it's life and safety, we there shouldn't be anything else.
So that's, yeah, I'll see you up there tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll have more. We'll have to take pictures and send it back to you because it's, it looks nice. I should have took pictures when I was there yesterday, but I didn't.
I know Idaho Power, I don't know when Idaho Power's gonna get that pole in. I haven't asked. We'll ask tomorrow.
Yeah, I know that they finally set a date. I know Idaho Powers slammed.
Oh, they are.
You know.
Like everybody else.
Yeah, and they will not allow us to turn the pickle bulb power back on until we place a new pole.
Oh, really?
Really.
I thought we'd already approved that.
We did. We routed it to, so they had two temporary poles out there. One fell down, got disconnected. We routed it underground to the other pole that was still standing. Idaho Power inspector came to come and turn it back on, and he did not like it. He wanted a brand-new pole in case this one rotted and fell away, too, so.
Yep.
Yeah, which I mean, and I I guess I should have looked at it closer. I don't think, it it looked pretty solid to me, but it's probably just best and safe that we get a new pole in there, which I haven't got a complete rundown of the cost of that, but I don't imagine it'd be over a thousand dollars, maybe. Something around in there. The poles are not cheap. They're not.
I think we already approved that, so we just need to get that done.
Yes, yes.
What are they doing today in the courthouse? They're working on the
So they are doing dedicated circuits to the treasures desks so that they can have space heaters because you really don't have heat over here. Because the boiler in this building is down, so really all you have is the cadet heaters in the wall, and it does not suffice in there. If they do try to use space heaters, they blow the fuse and their computers go down, which is not good when you're trying to do that kind of work. So these are dedicated spaces that they can put space heaters at their desks and and be comfortable and be able to work.
Perfect.
Sorry about the noise.
Sherry needs one of those, too.
Yeah, right there.
She does.
That's a great idea. It can point just at you and the other one will be good.
We want air conditioners.
Yeah. We need fans. She needs a space heater.
Yes, and I think presiding attorneys are realizing what it feels like when the boiler's actually turned on. They're getting heated out over there pretty badly. We just have to get the programming down. It's a pretty complex system. It's got just heating and all the other and in all the other areas so that you can, it's zone heating, right? So you can heat this little area here and that little area here. I went over there yesterday and tried to program him. It worked while I was there. This morning, it's back to square one.
So
So I need to go work in there.
Yeah, you do. It's toasty.
When we did those Wi-Fi thermostat throughout.
Yeah, there's, I think, five thermostats downstairs, just in their little area.
Were those Wi-Fi stats over there?
No.
So we didn't do that building.
Correct.
Eighty degrees.
Yeah, it's like you open the door, it's
Not good.
Not good, no.
Seventy is tolerable, eighty.
It's dusty, smelly, and hot.
For the attorneys, no.
Yeah, there's a large hook in there somewhere.
Yeah, so we do have a contractor come in to look at that this afternoon. So hopefully, they'll be able to help us get that squared away.
Perfect.
So they're not suffering anymore.
Anything else you need from us in the short term?
More people. I know we still have that HVAC. I'll I'll get with H R O. This is gonna be a big lift all the way around to get the the processes down that we need to really have down, and it's gonna take years to get to get us squared away where we where we want to be so that we're thinking ahead.
Talk to Mike about a gentleman I interviewed yesterday.
Okay. I did get a really good candidate that somebody that he sent me. I don't know if they're interested in doing facilities maintenance, but I did reach out to him. So there, I got some lines, but we just gotta get him here.
All right.
Right.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to be going, I will move that we go into executive session for I D O code seventy-four two oh six one F. It's my moved and seconded roll call vote.
Opps, nai.
Mop and I.
Caldwell, I.
All right.